Thank you, Your Worship. I'll call our meeting back to order. Next lady, please.
Your Worship, it is the report of the Committee of the whole closed session. And this is the recommendation that was put forward at the last council meeting, January 18th. And it reads pursuant to council's closed resolution of July 15th, 2013, the city not support the North Vancouver Museum Concept Plan. That's March 2013, K E I'd space design. Let staff be requested to report back to council with options for the possible relocation of the museum. And that staff begin discussions with the Squamish and Slaywithtooth First Nations to explore opportunities for a jointly funded museum location that can showcase the First Nations' experience as a key component of our local history.
Thank you. Council Keating?
I'm with the recommendation, Your Worship.
And I'll second it. Council Keating?
Thanks very much, Your Worship. Well, this is a very, this is not a happy day, I would say. I think we've had a recent, we've had a longstanding discussion, I think, with the Museum and Archives Commission about how to proceed with the renewal of the museum that's currently at Third and Long, at Third and Chesterfield, at Presentation House. There's been many proposals over the years from the National Maritime Centre to this proposal, various other options on the table. And in July 2013, council designated the Pipe Shop at the waterfront site, the pinnacle site, Shipyard Site, rather, as the location for a museum on the basis that a fundraising campaign would go forward. And the city upped its commitment from $2.5 million, or thereabouts, to up to $5 million matching dollars, provided that a fundraising campaign by the Museum and Archives Commission could reach that sum by December 31st, 2015. The, I like to say that Don Evans and other members of the Museum and Archives Commission have worked very, very hard to try to achieve that goal and have gone very far down that road. I would say two things in terms of why, at this point, I am moving this recommendation. The first is, Your Worship, and I think ultimately it's probably the more minor of the considerations that I'm giving to this, is that the Museum and Archives Commission has in fact, or the fundraising cabinet has in fact, despite all their very diligent and hard efforts, have failed to meet the deadline that we agreed to in July 2013. They are very close to that. The second and more important issue, Your Worship, is that late last year, council was provided with report by BDO, which is a, I'm not sure the entire title of the organization, Your Worship, but they are people who assess the viability of proposals such as this. And the BDO Canada advised council that even were the monies to be raised for the capital side of this project, there was a very high probability that this would not be a successful enterprise in terms of the financial model that was put forward. And this was, to my mind, very sobering news. This was done by an organization that does both nonprofits and for-profit groups. And the two people they put on it were specialists in nonprofit organizations. And they brought forward these recommendations in terms of the business case for the Museum and Archives. And so while we may be in a situation, Your Worship, that we're very close to being able to reach the capital funds, I think any reasonable person taking a look at the BDO report will come to the conclusion, in fact, that the city would be ill-advised to go down that road on this proposal. And I would say, Your Worship, that this was a report that was requested as part of the resolution the council adopted in July 2013, so this was not a surprise. Folks knew that a report was coming. And these are the results of the report, and these are something that necessarily has to go in. So as I say, Your Worship, it's not primarily for me, the fact that the Museum and Archives Commission was unable to achieve the capital fundraising that they needed to achieve at this stage, but the very serious reservations that were raised by the BDO report, that, to my mind, would have saddled the taxpayers of this community with an ongoing charge that I didn't think was appropriate. So with regret, I move the motion.
Thank you, Council Keating. Am I going to wrap up? Or, okay, thank you. Happy to, council speak, Council Begg.
Thank you, Your Worship. Well, I think this is the wrong step for the council to take in terms of the interest, the interests of the community. The, I think the opportunities that have existed, or the opportunities that exist by having the museum located in the Pipe Shop are substantial, and they support council's desire to see something exciting happen down in the shipyards area. And in fact, Roger Brooks, in his report, and in his presentation in this council chamber, indicated to us that he thought that that was a very appropriate use of that site, and that it would enhance the attractiveness, the viability of the total plan that he had for revitalizing the Lower Lonsdale Shipyards area. In fact, he was more encouraging about the benefit that would come from this when compared, for example, to Presentation House Gallery being loaded, located in the area. I'm supportive of Presentation House Gallery being there, as I am supporter of the museum being there, because I believe both those are cultural-related activities that will provide and complement the commercial, hope, the commercial development we see, in addition to the public facilities, such as the skating rink and the outdoor areas and the attractiveness of the waterfront with, right at the foot of Lonsdale. I would point out that as far back as 1994, there were reports, I remember, because I was on district council at that time, I was not yet back as mayor until 96, but Mayor Laux, in a, in a report, was apparently quoted as saying, "Ideally, the museum would benefit from the adaptive reuse of one of the heritage buildings, and the old Burrard Shipyard Site is both a community gathering place and North Vancouver Shore Place Museum." There's been a suggestion that we want to ensure that the museum is of a local context. And I think the plans that the museum commission have put together have met that balance of providing not only an opportunity to showcase the history of North Vancouver, the North Shore, with its shipbuilding, with its logging, and, but also do so in a way, and would do so in a way that would take, make use of modern technology, interactivity, such as the museum down in Seattle, Mo-Hi, it's called, the Museum of History and Industry, which does very well. I think also, Your Worship, part of the reason that I pursued this as strongly as I have, is I know that before I came in council in 2000, the fall of 2011, there was talk about the museum being located in the Oni site at 13th and Lonsdale, and there was a decision by council that that not happened, that it be relocated. And I recall, prior to my being on council, Your Worship, you giving me a tour of the waterfront and suggesting, in fact, that the Pipe Shop would be a great home for the museum. And it was sort of partly because of that, and partly because of my own interest, that I was happy to become council's representative on the museum commission and pursue that dream. So I think that, and the District of North Vancouver has indicated that original arrangement that goes back to the 90s was that the district would build the archives and the city would build the museum. And to, I guess the concern I have is that locating the museum anywhere but that's going to have a high opportunity exposure to both the public, and we're going to make the shipyards a gathering place for North End citizen, North End residents, and tourists, will have an impact. If it's a smaller facility, or if it's in a less accessible site, such as the Vancouver Museum is in a poor location, for example, that affects the visitor rates, and that affects the viable, the operational viability. I think the BDO report, in my opinion, was a poor assessment of the revenue risk. I think that the, the museum, the commission responded in a responsible way, addressing the issues and the shortfalls of that report. The comparisons, which were to Storium, which was really a theatrical venture in Vancouver that was not a museum, and then the comparison with the museum itself, the Vancouver Museum, is that that museum is in another way location, and it's an old traditional museum. We're talking about a different concept here. So I really feel that having the Presentation House Gallery there is good. Council, I commented earlier, we had-
So Council Begg, I'm just sort of mindful of-
Oh, I'm sorry. And I'll come back afterwards if, and finish my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Clark?
Well, ladies and gentlemen, I've been at the table since the Maritime Museum was on the boil, and that, for various reasons, was not successful. I did not support the use of the Pipe Shop for our local museum initially, because I believed, and still to some extent, believed that the museum, the theatre, and the gallery should all be in one place. However, we council, in its infinite wisdom, decided that it was not to be, and now we find ourselves in this situation. I have to say that I have some familiarity with capital campaigns. I was on the Lionsgate Hospital Board years ago, when the Lionsgate Hospital Foundation was created, and so I have that familiarity. I understand exactly what the museum is trying to do, as to most of us, and that is raise $5 million to match the funds which the city has pledged. Well, I can think of no finer place than the Pipe Shop for the museum to go into. There's no comparator anywhere on the North Shore, certainly not within the city. The Squamish and Burrard bands have indicated in front of this council that that's their preferred location. They have indicated support, in general terms, for the programming of the museum, should it go there. Roger Brooks, remember him? The American who breezed through town and juiced us all up about Site Five and the waterfront? Roger Brooks said the Pipe Shop and the museum would be a good thing. So, there were over 300 donors pledged. I don't think I'm telling anything out of school here. There's a lot that's gone in camera that needs to come out in public. And as far as I'm concerned, we should, and I'm going to ask, Your Worship, that you respect this, I will move a motion to defer this consideration, the motion we have in front of us, until the museum has presented in open council to, presented to us in open council. Far too much has gone on in the back room there, and it needs to come out into public, and then we'll see who stands by the museum and who does not. I have often said that I'm a defender of the taxpayers first, first and foremost. I do not believe that to snub the incredible work that the museum has done, and come very close to their, their stated goal in a very, very short timeframe, a timeframe which put onerous demands on them and their volunteers. I don't believe that we've given them enough time, and that we are close enough to see the light at the end of the tunnel. I was at the Presentation House, pardon me, the Polygon Gallery groundbreaking a week or so ago. There was a major announcement made as the shovel was going into the ground, there was $700,000 pledged. So if we give the museum people a little bit more time, if we give them the support which they deserve, I believe we'll be successful. I'll make the deferral motion when you allow me to, Your Worship.
Thank you very much, Council Clark. We're going to go around and have discussion. Other members of council. Council Beck. Thank you.
Sorry, I won't be quite as emotional there, because I wasn't on council when this first started. And I do look at it from a business perspective, and I understand that the museum has done reports, the staff have done reports, and I understand how reports are written. We can all balance them a little bit. But these two, I couldn't quite find a balance in them, between the museum reports and the BDO report. And the BDO report really was very strongly suggesting this was not a good business plan. In fact, they were very, very clear in stating this was not a good business plan. So as much as I support a museum, I do not support a museum on the waterfront. I think museums are destination businesses, so you're going to get the business no matter where you are. There is some other ideas, but don't need to go into those right now. I believe if we put it on the waterfront, it will be an ongoing expense to our taxpayers, and I don't believe in voting for that. I would be very cautious on the donors, the 300 donors. I've read so many articles, and of, people don't come through with the, with the promises. So again, there's articles for and articles against. I think that, as I say, it is a destination business. I just have major concerns of our ongoing costs, and that's probably my very major concern. As a businessperson, this is not a good business plan.
Thank you. Other members of council? Councilor, okay, Council Buckham, thank you.
I was waiting for Council Buchanan, but-
Oh, she's waiting for you, I guess.
I guess so.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll, I'll go first, then. I, I can't support the motion that is on the table. I think it's extremely harsh. I think it has set out conditions, or references conditions, that were imposed upon the museum that were simply not imposed upon Presentation House Gallery. I'd like to go back to what Council Beck was just saying about destination, that people will make a point of going to the museum. If that were the case, then Presentation House Gallery would have been content to stay up the hill where they currently, where they formerly were. Instead, they recognized, and they told us over and over again, how valuable that foot of Lonsdale site would be for them. Because people were not trekking up the hill to look at their shows. Anytime that I was in there, relatively few people were there. People, their keen supporters came out, of course, every time a new show opened. But they stress the importance of that walk-by traffic that comes from being at a transportation hub, a commercial hub beside two hotels, foot of, in close proximity to our waterfront site, that will, we are already seeing the kind of draw that it is having, bringing people across the water, bringing people from the district and our own community, and West Van, and visitors from out of town, down to the waterfront. To say that that location would not contribute to the success of the museum, I think, is simply not, not accurate. I think it's important for the public to have the information that has been provided to council, and that includes the report that Council Keating referred to, but more importantly, the results of the fundraising effort. You need to understand that in a really relatively short period of time, the very dedicated fundraising team has put together 83.1% of the funds that they were asked to raise in order to get the five million matching funds from the city. Included in that, a federal government grant of $2.2 million. Can we afford to let that kind of money go when we are trying to achieve a new museum? I don't think so. From the private sector, $1.8 million. And the provincial government, they were hoping to achieve $1 million from the provincial government, and the assumption was that it would come from the residual money from the National Maritime Centre funding that, that they had provided. And it is the province's position that they have contributed to the preservation of that, that historical site. In my time on council, I have seen the demolishing of many heritage buildings, the lifting of the designation of a site of national historical importance, the shift of vision from recognizing the important place that it has played in the history of the Squamish, as well as our, our own history over the years. Instead, we have basically reduced the historical imprint of that site to the name, the shipyards. I think it shows a great failure of the imagination. I recognize the caution that some members of council want to exercise in view of the BDO report. But I have to say that I could not see in that report the rationale. I could not understand why they would compare the impact of our new museum being located in a refurbished historic heritage building, on a waterfront that would be a lively draw for so many people, to a place like Storium, that was underground, that was kind of historical theatre, that had costs that are not in any way costs that would be associated with our waterfront museum. And in, in response to council's request for a response, we got a very persuasive response from the Museum and Archives, explaining what they felt were the limitations and failures of understanding on the part of the BDO report. I think the, the perspective that the BDO report takes is, would be appropriate, perhaps for a for-profit business adventure. This is not a for-profit business adventure. It is a nonprofit, community endeavor. And so I can't support this. And I would request the opportunity to speak again.
Okay. Thank you. Then we have, Council Keating gets a second chance. We're going to go around twice, so-
Yeah, I'll just, Your Worship, I'll just wrap up on my time.
When your time's come, okay. Council Buchanan?
Thank you very much, Your Worship. Well, first and foremost, before I go into my rationale, I would like to thank Mr. Evans and Mr. Ossler, and Ms. Patrick, and all the staff, and volunteers who've worked on this campaign. And they have worked very hard, and it has been an enormous amount of work for them. And so I do think you can appreciate that work that you've done for, for the community. This has been a very, very long process. This has been going on for over three years. And it was a vision that was presented to council by the commission, not one that council put forth to them. It was a vision that they had of moving towards a more modern regional attraction, and moving away from more, other than just a municipal museum. And council supported that in principle. We supported that in principle. But we were very clear, or some of us were very clear, and myself, being one of them, has been very clear all along about concerns that we had, not of necessarily the vision, but the reports in terms of how it would be implemented, operational concerns, shortfalls that were being identified. But the commission wanted to move forward, so we supported that. And we supported it not only, not only as in principle, but we supported it in a commitment financially, and we gave a site. But we had very, very specific requirements that this council has a resolution to that passed, that specifically laid out, I think, 10 requirements. Some have been met, and some have not, but the most specific one that has not been met is the financial one. And so at the end of the day, this is not about making, you know, this is not to say that nobody has worked hard. Everybody has worked hard. But this is not about making a decision at an emotional level, or foregoing something that the federal government is providing to us because we feel emotional about it. This is about looking at the business plan that's been put forth to us, very clear reports from a, from an independent financial company, our own staff. We've had counters to that from, from the commission. And so at the end of the day, we are still, I am still left with very clear concerns about financially, how this is going to go forward and be sustainable. And that concern reflects on, not us, at the end of the day, it will be our citizens who will have to pay if this is not successful moving forward. So this isn't, so as much as the work's been done, I don't think it is all for naught, because we will look at options for a new home for the museum. It's not going to be, perhaps not going to be, where people thought it was going to be. But we will certainly be moving forward and looking at having a museum somewhere in the, hopefully, the city. And if not, then we will wait to hear back from staff on what they come back with in terms of future recommendations. But at this time, I cannot support something that has very clear indications that it will come back to be a large cost and a financial burden on the city of North Vancouver. And that is not to say that we cannot celebrate the history within the shipyards. There is many things that we can do down in that shipyard to celebrate the history. There's already an active shipyard right next door to it. We will have many components that will be operating down there. And in fact, the museum can do other augment programming down there. So this will be supporting something new for the community, it just unfortunately I cannot support it in the location that's being presented. Thank you very much, Your Worship.
Thank you very much. And before we go on, second time, I'm going to make just a few comments. I, I do agree, this is a sad day. This is not something we're particularly proud of. I know that a good number of people have put quite a bit of time into this. I think led by Mr. Don Evans, who has done an amazing job keeping this moving forward in a positive way, and raising some very significant funds. And I think the success of the railway museum in Squamish is a large testament to his ability. Also, Mr. Ossler here, and the friends of the museum, the entire group have all been extremely hardworking and very dedicated. They are believing in what they are doing, and they're doing it because they feel it's the right thing, and in many ways, it is the right thing. Unfortunately, we had set some parameters up when we talked about the motion in July the 15th, 2013, so two and a half years ago. And some of those items have been met somehow. And it's unfortunate, they were unable to be successful with the fundraising, which I think is quite a key one. And I think we have to very important point, point out that, I guess they say 70% of the dollars have been raised, well, that's government dollars. It's the private sector that really has to help step up, and I know they did very well here, better than I thought that they could at the end, but they were certainly short in my mind. But was it clincher, was it BDO study? And the BDO study made some, I know, some, some observations that they felt were, had to be said. I remember the Lord's study was done for, for the museum. The Lord's study was the one that talked about how it was going to operate and, and work forward. And that, that, this study that was done by the Lords already had contemplated and indicated a financial shortfall each year. They were saying it was going to be each year. So I think that that was a big flag for me as well. I think we're going into a bit tougher times for raising funds. I think it's going to be a bit more difficult to raise the funds. As the economy tightens up, it's changed very significantly, and I think it's going to be much harder to raise those dollars. But we are going to have a museum. And I, I do really do believe that the museum that we have now is not the appropriate situation for them. Presentation House has not worked. I disagree. I don't believe that Presentation House Gallery, the theatre, and the museum, shall be one billion, need to be in their own independent places. And we've, we've shown that they shouldn't, they won't work well together. They need to have their own space. I think we need to have staff look back at that, work with the Museum and Archives, to see what our options are. I've had a number of people say to me, talk about economies of scale, is there an opportunity to have the museum and the archives together? Which would require significant funding, which I believe we have to step up and do. We have a large storage facility, it has to be dealt with. How do we manage the storage facility, storing all of our 17,000, I believe, or so artifacts that we have in the museum? And so we have to deal with that. We have been committed, the city gives $500,000 a year for the operating of the museum, as does the district. So the two North Fans together contribute over $1 million in operating costs. I would put that per capita at, I'd match that up with any other municipality in British Columbia, per capita funding wise. I think we, we do pull our share there. We just need to find a proper home for it. And fortunately, the, as this BDO study points out, that there's very big- And fortunately, as this BDO study points out, that there's very big pitfalls and the city would be on the hook for these. Not the district, but the city should be moved forward and not achieve the financial, both capital and operating funds that would be needed, especially designed as that new innovative museum that I hear about. They always want the innovative, sort of interactive, I guess, museum. So with that, this is a sad situation, but it also is an opportunity to continue to move forward to make sure we have a museum that serves the people in our community and it tells the history as it has in the past and continues to do so for people, the residents and visitors. So with that, I'll be supporting the motion. So Counselor Bell wanted to go next, and then Counselor Bookham, and then Counselor Clark. Okay.
Just wanted to address a couple of things. And one is the issue of the operational concerns that a couple of council members have specifically raised, a few council members have raised. And the suggestion that if there was, if the revenue projections that the museum commission has made were not met, or if the expenses were higher than the plans were, which were the two issues that the BDO report addressed, it's been, it's clear that from a business point of view, that the museum, if there was an indication that costs were rising or that revenues were not being achieved once the museum was open, there, it is obvious or it is the role that would normally be playing from a business point of view, that they would then, there would be adjustments to the costs and cutbacks to, so there would not be a shortage. There is, yes, there is money required from the two municipalities. All museums require contributions from their community. I don't think any are so-called break even in terms of their revenue from their users. It is something that is provided as a benefit, a service, much as a library is, to the residents, those who are interested in history, those who, and this facility was going to be also a gathering place, an opportunity for a sort of a community dialogue centre as well. But if there were, if indeed some of the projections were not met, then it was clear that the logical thing would be that the commission would adjust their operating costs appropriately. And this wouldn't be that you would suddenly wait, come to the end of a year and discover that you were, had not met your revenue projections or you had increased costs. That would be seen on a monthly basis as the commission operates like a board of directors. And if they saw, in fact, there was some direction that was different than the plan was, the plan would be adjusted so that the commitment to the two municipalities is that their annual commitment of a million dollars, $500,000 from each community, adjusted for inflation as you go forward, would be all the, the museum would ask from the municipalities. And there would be no risk to the residents because the costs would be cut back. So, and I think also that the, in addition to the money that Counselor Bookham referenced, the 83%, there's 600,000 in process, which really takes our fundraising efforts up to 8.9 million or 89.1%. So we're very close. And I would point that when, as I say, and I know there is arguments, I have heard the suggestion, but when we, there were no restrictions placed on Presentation House Gallery for the support we gave them. But they were only at, they're at 75% of their fundraising capacity at the time that they were given the go-ahead with their project. And the fact that the museum is almost at 90% and we have very strong indications of leads that were waiting for boards to meet early this year, that we would have no problem achieving the fundraising target. Because usually, the period that is given for fundraising is much longer than the museum has in fact worked. I just think that this would have been, the museum to be located in the shipyards would really add to the attractiveness and the economic viability of the shipyards. We're trying to have a place where people from both North Vancouver will want to go down and enjoy restaurants and activities. And it's an ideal location because it's at the northern terminus of the Seabust. So tourists would come over from the convention centre. It would be a logical thing to happen. So I just, and Your Worship, I will happily support a motion afterwards to either, to defer this, to allow for a presentation. But I think that the thing that we should be doing is giving more time, a reasonable amount of more time for the museum to complete their fundraising. Thank you.
And I want to thank, my final comment, as a member who's been on the commission, I want to thank those who you've mentioned already and all the others who have put their time and energy and those who are, have committed to contributing financially.
Thank you. Counselor Bookham, I believe, is next.
Thank you. I did not understand the challenge of raising funds for a project like this until we started to receive the reports from the team that was raising funds for the museum. I didn't know, for example, that once a project has had commitments up to 70% of their target goal, that that is an indication that they should proceed, that they, that they have the confidence of the community and those people who are putting their financial resources behind the project. I know that that was the case for the gallery, that they did not have to meet 100% of their fundraising target before council gave a blessing saying, "Good, carry on, you're well on your way and we wish you well." The museum has not had that same support coming from this council and, you know, it's for each individual councillor to, you know, to explain, you know, the distinction that they're making there. The fundraisers have made very reasonable requests of us in light of their report on their success to date. They are asking that the city honor the current 83% of committed funding by approving the project for the new museum. In other words, treat them as we treated the gallery. With the certainty that we were behind the project and we felt that this, that there was sufficient demonstration of success, the likelihood of very soon getting the necessary funds to meet the 100% of the target would be made so much easier. And we heard that argument as well, you know, that the gallery needed a site. And once they were assured of that waterfront site, they, they felt that they would just take off and it contributed tremendously to their success. They asked that this decision is made publicly, be promoted by all parties and include a public announcement that will include the federal government and current founding partner donors. That the campaign can continue, including the following steps. Amend the campaign plan to reflect the extended timeframe. Continue to build the campaign cabinet, which will immediately pursue the fundraising opportunities that have been outlined in this report. Most important of all, I think we ought not make this decision tonight. Our community, the people who have an interest in the history of our community, need the opportunity to look at the reports that we have been discussing in camera. And they should have an opportunity to let their feelings be known to us. And only then should we be prepared to vote. If our community supports this project, and there's very clear indications of that strong support, then we should facilitate, not set up artificial barriers, not create, you know, an excuse for not supporting this project. So I will definitely support the motion to defer until we have heard from both BDO and have had, the museum has had a chance to present their response to the BDO report and the presentation that they made to us tonight on the success of their campaign. I hope that you will at least give them that courtesy. One other thing, I think you have to understand the expertise of Don Evans. He has been through this, he has lived this experience and been a major factor in the success of the Squamish Railway Museum. He's not speaking from a business perspective, I mean, he is, he is a very successful businessman and he does have that business experience. He is not a dreamer. He's a doer. And he has the experience and the resume to back up the reports that he has presented to us. We owe him and the rest of the fundraising team the courtesy of presenting their findings in public. Thank you.
So before, I see Counselor Clark, Counselor Bach, Counselor Keating wants to speak. Counselor Keating, yes, he's spoken once. You've spoken once, Holly's once too. So Counselor Clark, before you make your motion, we're going to make sure everybody gets a chance to speak. Okay.
I just want to wrap up.
Wrap up, okay. Thank you. So I'm going to put Counselor Clark up next.
I'll give my assurances, I won't make a motion until the appropriate time.
Thank you. I'll just.
So, a purée for me. In the interest of full disclosure, as Counselor Bookham referenced, I believe that we do need to defer this decision, at least from this evening until some point in the very near future, when the museum can come in front of us and give us their side of the story. With respect to BDO, they used to be known as BDO Dunwoodie. I knew some people in the accounting business and that was their name for many years. They have on their website, "BDO provides assurance, accounting, tax and advisory services that are tailored to our client's industry, unique circumstances, blah, 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 blah." So they're an accounting management firm. Well, you know what? They're like lawyers, you know? I mean, I can put four lawyers in a room and get six opinions. Same thing with management accountants. So I'll be very interested to see, we had an explanation of what BDO came forward with from the museum, point by point. It was very believable, so, you know, we can have the argument about who's right and who's wrong, but that will be the argument, who's right and who's wrong. So a couple of clarifications. 2014 is when we gave blessing, July, I believe it was, of 2014, is when the city gave blessing for the fundraising process to start. That's only 17 months ago. Now, can you imagine trying to raise $10 million? Okay, city's on the hook for five or has a pledge for five, but still, getting a campaign going takes a little bit of time. And, you know, it's not a question of you walk through the door and get the check that day. You've got to go through the door a number of times. You have to present to a number of different people. You have to present to different levels of the organization. And so after 17 months, for the museum to be at the point that they are with respect to fundraising, we were, it was suggested to us that they're ahead of time, of both time and financial targets, according to their own KCI campaign design. So, you know, what's the problem here? I mean, I got to ask some questions. Why are we backing out now? We're on the cusp of a successful campaign. And here we are, all of a sudden thrown in the towel, "Oh, you didn't do it by December the 31st of December 2015." So it's all off. Well, you know what? Polygon Gallery didn't have any second guess reports. We've had a second guess report on the museum. We had to do the BDO study. A complete, you know, parabolic shift. Okay, we got to have a second report. Well, Polygon didn't have to go through that hoop. I mean, what's up with that? I would think that there are other forces afoot. Maybe somebody's got Site Five on their target list and they don't want anything to do with the museum because they have a grander plan. Could be a tent with an ice ring under it. I don't know. I don't know. So I will make the motion, Your Worship, at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Counselor Bach.
I just want to say once again that there is absolutely no disrespect to the museum people or to our staff. And I want to make it very clear that our staff have done a lot of work on this museum and on the reports and everything else. So I wasn't here when Polygon and all of that, and that's not an excuse. This is my personal feeling that that's the most expensive real estate in the city of North Vancouver. And I don't think putting the museum there is the right move. I think there's be a lot of opportunity, cost lost. I also believe that even though Counselor Bookham doesn't want to agree with me, that museums are destination businesses and people will go there as they will go to archives and libraries. So again, I respect all the work that all of you people have done and all of our staff have done and I thank you all very much.
Counselor Keating.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. I hope you'll give me, there we go, excellent. I just want to say, I just want to echo the comments of Counselor Bach just made. This has nothing to do with the individuals involved and I certainly respect all the work that's been done. This is a question of the role we'll play, city councillors, to make a tough choice on a very big ticket item for a community our size. And I think, here's the deal. I think people need to remember that it was not this council that said, "Please, Museum and Archives, bring us this proposal for this kind of museum." We had long had about $2.5 million set aside in a capital plan to be able to fund a museum and it sat there and it sat there. And the Museum and Archives Commission, in its wisdom, decided that they were going to come with a proposal for a much bigger thing than was initially proposed and all that. And at that time, we said, "Okay, we'll go in on that. And we'll say, if you can do this, we'll give you $5 million matching dollars. We're going to go from $2.5 to $5 million." But we all agreed, there were conditions. One was that you match that capital by, you get the $5 million if you can match it by December 31st, 2015, if you can raise the $10 million in pledges. Well, that didn't happen. But I have to say, that's not my biggest concern. My biggest concern is item number nine in the long list of resolutions that were passed on July 14th, 2013. And that was the one that said that we would, all of us, subject ourselves to an independent financial review of the proposal. We did that and the results were, the review was pretty poor. And for us, you know, we can gainsay, we can say, "Well, accounting firms are a dime a dozen." If that's the case, we should just, I don't know, we should hire the next, you know, Miss Smith Grade Eight class to do her year end because then we don't need accounting firms. We'll just do it that way. You can't do that. You have to take the good with the bad. And I think it's also worth noting, and I think people have invoked the Polygon Gallery, I think the huge difference here is that, yes, indeed, for many years, since the mid-1990s, the city had agreed to contribute about $2.5 million and I can't remember what the final figure was to that project. Difference is, at the end of the day, we have nothing more to do with that project. We own the land on which it sits. We can have that land back, but in terms of its operations, we have no ties to it whatsoever. At the end of the day, we cannot escape the fact that the director of the Museum and Archives is a public employee of the city and the district. And that, in fact, the Museum and Archives Commission are appointed by city and district council. And at the end of the day, any shortfalls come to this table. There's no other table. This is it. And I think that's why we put in that recommendation, that there would be those financial controls. And the results are what the results are. And it gives many people pause. And I've heard it said here tonight that on the one hand, the museum's going to be a great draw. And I've heard it said, on the other hand, "Well, we're killing the museum if we don't put it in a spot where a lot of people are going to come." It's a wonder, a tudder. My real sense is, in fact, that if you put the museum at this location, it's really to the benefit of the museum and that's fair enough. But at the end of the day, there will be a museum. The motion specifies that there will be a museum and we will look at a Plan B. And it took many, many sites and many, many locations for the Polygon Gallery, the former Presentation House Gallery, to find its spot. And that too will pass. Your Worship, I have no intention at this stage of supporting Counselor Clark's motion to defer. I've been around this table too long, I can entirely anticipate what will happen. I have no problem with full disclosure and with the permission of the Secondar, I would propose a friendly amendment to my motion, which would be that all reports received by council regarding the Shipyards museum proposal be released to the public. And that means in camera or in open council. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you. Counselor Clark.
I will move, Worship, that this motion.
Oh, sorry, one sec. Somehow I turned it off. Sorry.
Motion be deferred to the next full council for a presentation by the museum and BDO.
Counselor Bell.
Second.
Okay. So it's a full motion, not really debatable, so we will, full vote's been requested. Thank you. Any news? Thank you.
Okay. So we will start with Counselor Keating.
Nay.
Counselor Bookham?
Yea.
Counselor Buchanan?
Nay.
Counselor Bach?
Nay.
Counselor Clark?
Yea.
Counselor Bell?
Yea.
Mayor Masado?
Nay.
It's defeated four to three.
And, let's go, a sec. Stand.
Can we go to Counselor? Can we go to councillor Keating's original motion with, yeah, with the addition that all reports regarding the Shipyards Museum closed and regularly be released to the public?
Thank you.
Your Worship, I'd ask the motion be divided.
Okay. How are we going to divide that?
Okay.
Division.
Okay.
Okay. So we're going to vote on, you can read it out.
Okay. Oh, the first part of the motion is that pursuant to the city's closed council resolution of July fifteenth, twenty thirteen, the city not support the North Vancouver Museum Concept Plan, that is March twenty thirteen, KEI Space Design, that staff be requested to report back to council with options for the possible relocation of the museum, and that staff begin discussions with the Squamish and Tsleil-Waututh First Nations to explore opportunities for a jointly funded museum location that can showcase the First Nations' experience as a key component of our local history.
Is that okay, councillor Bell? You're okay with that grouping? Thank you. Okay, call a question on that.
Councillor Bookham?
Nay.
Councillor Buchanan?
Yea.
Councillor Back?
Yea.
Councillor Clark?
Councillor Clark is left, so he's not, not here.
Okay. Councillor Bell?
Nay.
Councillor Keating?
Yea.
Councillor Bookham?
Yea.
Mayor Masado?
Yea.
It's carried unanimously.
Thank you. And next item?
Is a motion to adjourn, please.
Thank you.
So much.
Councillor Buchanan, councillor Keating, all in favour, opposed, carried unanimously. Thank you.